Before we start the council meeting tonight, we have a notice of a public hearing to close a portion of Middle Street. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard? The council will consider this as an ordinance a little bit later in our meeting. Anyone here that wishes to address that matter? This matter comes before us on a petition of a Ms. Hayward, Vary- Hayward, I believe is her name. She's a property owner who owns this portion of Middle Street.
Who owns Middle Street?
I can tell this, but she contacted me like a year and a half ago and asked if we could assist her in vacating the street. It took me a while to get all the information. We discovered that Ms. Hayward, Eagle Heights Baptist Church, and Rick and Shirley Schollenberger were the owners that would be affected by this street. It was a dead end situation that dead ended into some property owned by Eagle Heights Baptist Church. It was an undeveloped street. It's on the flat. No one has ever driven this street because it's full of trees. There is no paving, no grading. It serves no purpose. Ms. Hayward and the Schollenbergers live side by side with the street going between their properties. This being an area that they were not maintaining, it grew into thorns and bushes. And they would like to remove the street from the flat so that they can expand their property boundaries to the middle of the street from each side. That would give them the authority to maintain that area and maybe make some use out of it. Behind them is the Eagle Heights Church property, which owns both sides of the street before it dead ends. And the church consented to this. So, the legal requirement is that we have a petition, which we have filed with our city clerk. We have to have a consent form from all the owners, and we do have the consent form. And we are required to publish notice of this twice in the newspaper, which we have done. So, we've met all the legal requirements and the council members, at least that's the background for this. So, unless someone has slipped in that wants to say something about this matter, we'll consider that no one is here wishing to speak in favor or against the closing of a portion of Middle Street. Are there any utilities involved? There are no utilities involved. Any other questions? We'll turn this back and let you start the council meeting. The public hearing is now adjourned.
May I would like to call to order the Harrison City Council meeting of March the 24th, 2016. Andrew Callroft, roll call.
Brian Herring, present.
Mary Jean Krieger, present.
Mitch Magnus, present.
Johnny Savage, present.
Brian Oswald, present.
Bill Oswald, absent.
Joel Williams, present.
Deanna Tadler, mayor pro.
I would ask now that everyone stand for your prayer. Brian Herring will lead the prayer, and then remain standing for the pledge, please.
Our heavenly Father, we take you to this opportunity together to do business in this city. We pray for wisdom and direction and guidance, Lord, to do our best to serve you and the city. In your name we pray. Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May you see it? I would like to recognize one group that is here tonight before we get started. It's the Harrison Regional Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class, some of them anyway, for 2016. Thank you guys for coming.
To which I was a member.
And you turned out just fine.
Not too bad.
What year was that?
2013.
1622. I would like to have everyone look at the minutes from the last meeting, February the 25th. Is there any discussion?
Motion that we accept the minutes from February 25th?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's go into department reports. Paul, do you have anything?
No.
Marvin, do you want to wait until?
No, let him go ahead now.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes, well, I just wanted to say that we've got our new fire trucks come in, and we've got them in service. All the guys are liking them, they're working great. We've got our new brush truck in. We've still got some boxes that we're going to put on this, toolboxes and stuff, we don't have to have it in service yet. And so, we, the other two trucks that we got rid of were engines. Harvey got one of them, and Cat Potato got one of them. So, they stay out here in Boone County, so I think they're going to be happy with that. Thank you all for supporting us with the trucks, and we greatly appreciate it.
Marvin, have any of the firefighters that are here did not use the trucks on call yet?
We, we had some ball calls.
You guys like the trucks?
Yeah. We spent three days, they come in and went over the trucks with us, and they pumped them, went over every option, everything they had to do with them. So, all the guys have pumped them, just on train and stuff. So, luckily we haven't had no major fires or anything. We drove them home on the surface calls and run, medical runs. Thank you.
Wade, do you have anything?
I was asked to provide a brief update on a few of the projects we have built. We've got two wastewater lift station projects that we're working on this year, one of which was completed this week, the Forest Heights Lift Station, and that was replacing two pumps and a new control panel up there. And we did the work this week while school was out for spring break, taking advantage of that time with low flows. That project was budgeted at, well, we planned 50,000, looks like we're going to slide in just under 30,000 on that one. So, we lucked out on two of our prices. The other lift station project is a very significant one at our main lift station down behind Ben Edding's. We're going to have to take that entire station offline and do some rehab work along the concrete wet well. We've got that scheduled for September and October. They're trying to catch a little drier season between, towards the end of summer and early fall, because we have to, we have to take it offline completely. We've got 200,000 budgeted for that. Most of that money is going to go into bypass pumping, to keep the system operating while we're working on the wet well. We've had a couple of problems down there over the last couple of weeks. Two pumps went out out of the fort there in the lift station. We've got one ordered, a new one in production right now, and then we sent one off to be rebuilt, and should get that tomorrow. Either tomorrow or Saturday, and we'll drop it back in as soon as we get it. A project that we talked about at council probably two, three years ago, the Eagle Heights sidewalk project, the safe routes to school. Highway Department sent me a set of 90% plans for those this week, so we're inching closer to actually seeing that project move forward. I wouldn't expect any work on it until late summer at the early days, but I've seen things going on that project. We've got several small drainage projects that we're working on around town that are, we're moving on, once we're done with those, we're going to move on to some of our bigger drainage projects, continue some work on the south side of town, on some larger drainage projects. We've got a couple of smaller sidewalk projects that we're going to be moving on to later this summer as well. The chemical feed project is moving along. We're still on target to start adding that late fall, sometime during the fall. We're actually working out some details with the ownership out of the metering station between Carol Boone and the city of Harrison. Currently, they own the metering station, so we've got to work with them in order to install our equipment there as well. We have one bridge project that we are getting started working on, design and plans, spear drives, it's a red book project. We're right now trying to evaluate whether it'd be better to build a bridge, or go in with some box culverts similar to what we did on Rock Springs Road. We're going to go whichever is most cost efficient in the long run. That project is budgeted at just over $320,000. I would not expect construction to begin on that until, I would say, late summer, at the earliest.
Wade, you said it's a bridge project, right, on the spear drive?
That low water crossing was a bridge project. We've, when the red book was prepared back in 2009, 2010, there were a handful of low water crossings that were included, included in there in order to get rid of those and raise them up where they're regular bridges or culverts. On our wastewater treatment plant permitting and regulatory issues, not much has changed, although we have finished the comment period on mineral standards for Crook Creek. And we responded to all the comments that we received, including some interesting comments from the EPA. We dealt with that as best we could. And we're actually just now waiting to get it scheduled for some joint committee meetings down in Lurac, with Senate and House committees down there. It's just part of the process. We hope, we hope to be back before the Pollution Control and Ecology Commission sometime later this year to get a final ruling. If not, we'll be carrying on next year. Once that ruling is finalized within, then it goes to the EPA for approval. It's hard to get a timeline, so they'll handle that. We've completed our first round of lead and copper sampling as part of the EPA's lead and copper rule for 2016. 60 samples were collected and sent down to the health department. At best, we won't get results, one to two months at best, before we can do it. Pretty slowly getting that information back to us. Meter project is moving along. Luke and I are actually going to provide a much more detailed report and some information next month as we go into committee meetings. One other item, we have scheduled a surplus auction for the city for June 4th. As we, all the departments are putting their list together, surplus equipment that's going to go out, and advertising that information out to the public as soon as we can. And that's all I have unless somebody has any specific questions.
He's talking about Hollywood Square?
Moving on, highway departments administering contract, their contract gives them until sometime in August to be done. I don't expect them to be here that long. The highway department's pretty generous with the amount of time they're giving the single contracts, just from the standpoint of equipment deliveries and even the mast arms and poles sometimes have very long lead times. But they've been getting their equipment in pretty quick, so I expect these guys to be done within a month or two.
When will they start plowing down?
They will let that contract sometime after June, once they get into their next fiscal year. I do not have a set date on there yet, but I do know, I do know they're planning on doing that in the second half of 2016, because we're going to fill the right of way utility search stations.
Does anybody have anything else for Wade? Chuck couldn't be here tonight, with parks. Chonda, do you have anything for housing?
Yeah, I'm recording.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and jump into commuter reports, community environment services. Joel, do you have anything? Housing, health, let's see, finance, Mitch, do you have anything?
Only thing, Luke and I went over some of the financials. We should have February to review our next committee meeting. We've had some subcommittee meetings in regard to police, our wages. We'll continue to hold, probably be done with that until the end of those subcommittee meetings, probably till the end of April.
Mary Jean, do you have anything for public safety? Brian, do you have anything for?
Just what Wade was asking.
And I don't have anything on resources and policy, so let's see, let's, anything on old business, Joe, do you need to talk about? On new business, I would like to acknowledge Judge Hathaway and Sheriff Mike Moore. You gentlemen would like to come up and?
You're not going to adopt the ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I wasn't going to do that.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to vacate the portion of Middle Street, place it on its first reading.
Second, Ted.
Have a motion in the second? Roll call vote?
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Oswald, absent?
Joel Williams?
Yes.
And, does Deanna get to vote?
No.
No, no, okay. So, six.
Motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Middle Street between blocks three and four of Watkins Edition revised. Now, as far as whatever the pleasure of the council is, we do have enough people to suspend the rules, if all of you should vote in favor of that. But it's up to you as to whether we put this on further readings tonight to try to finalize this. Like I said, they've been waiting on me to get this done for a year and a half, so I guess there's no emergency. It would, however, probably let them go ahead and begin cutting and brushing, maybe before it rains out too much this year.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules?
Put it on the second and third reading.
Roll call.
Who seconded that?
I did, Mitch.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Oswald, absent?
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Middle Street between blocks three and four of Watkins Edition revised, and since we, that motion was to put it on its second and third reading, let's do it all together. An ordinance vacating a portion of Middle Street between blocks three and four of Watkins Edition revised.
Motion to adopt?
I think there was to be a adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt? Any comments? Roll call vote again?
That would just be an up and down.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Emergency clause, if you all are willing, this would let them start probably next week to do work on this, whereas if we don't adopt the emergency clause, we, they will have to wait 90 days.
Make a motion, we adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause? Up and down? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Marvin. Okay, now, does Judge Hathaway and Sheriff Moore, would you like to go up and talk about the jail tax? Gentlemen, go ahead and put in, please.
Okay. First of all, I can say I appreciate you guys allowing us to be here tonight. So, what we're speaking about is, of course, the sales tax that's coming due in December. This is a sales tax that supports law enforcement. It's supporting about 1.2 million dollars a year for our sheriff's department. I might just want to talk about the need for the sheriff's department this quarter of January. I'm going to talk about the county side of it, what it does if we don't get this. Number one, we'll see a lot of our grants with our volunteer fire departments, sanctuary grants are able to give out now, dry up, because we won't have the money to give it to them. Second, it is, it's needed, we'll lose 16% across the board of our employees and stuff if this doesn't pass. Now, I know, nobody likes taxes, we all know that, but it's a necessary tax, and it's a tax that we've been paying for 10 years. It's a quarter cent, quarter percent, it's one billion every 10 hours. I know most people say, well, you're going to have to use that in the dryer or something like that. I understand that, but it's still, it's a tax, but it's not a new tax. So, I wouldn't say anymore, I might get up and explain this side of it, but I appreciate you listening, and thank you.
Good judgment.
Thank you again for letting us come. Deanna told me keep it under 30 minutes, so I'm going to try.
Should I start my timer now?
Yeah, you better start. Ten years ago-
It was at 30 minutes.
Yeah. I'm getting loaded on that. Ten years ago, our community came together, recognized that we had a need for a new jail, and the ballot asked for a quarter cent sales tax to build and maintain a jail or sheriff's office in our community here. And when I say that, I'm because it's not really a county issue, I say it's county and city issue. We're all in this community together, and everybody recognized the need that we had. We had a 36-bed jail. It was very overprouted, had been for years. The community, again, came together, saw the need, passed the tax. We built a 104-bed jail, thinking that that would last us for years and years and years ago. And then in 2011, Arkansas passed Arkansas Act 570. And that changed everything. And so, our jail that we thought was going to last for years and years and years, 104 beds, all of a sudden began to fall again. And we're still experiencing that. The Arkansas prison system has been behind about 2,700 folks that are backed up in county jails statewide. I'm not sure what the number is now, it is down, so they are doing some things to remedy that. The problem is, is most of the county jails in Arkansas still have a large portion of their beds that are filled with folks who are waiting to go to department corrections. And that creates a lot of problems. The medical needs, getting paid by the state sometimes is a problem. The biggest problem that we have is that, again, we have a 104-bed jail, 25 of those beds are female beds. So, we could easily be completely full with 80 prisoners, because those, those female beds are separate, we have one female in there. You might as well have all 25 beds taken up, because you can't add any males over there, if you can see what I'm saying. So, section of that, we can be completely full of 80. Very seldom do we get below 80 prisoners in our jail. Today, we're anywhere between 85 and 90. They're about an hour ago, so I don't know what's happened since then. But we have a problem of staying full all the time. The chief can tell you that there's times that we just have to say no, and we can't take any more prisoners. And that's a problem. It creates a problem for your budget, because you're having to haul them to another facility within the hole. It's a problem for us when we're full, because we're not as aggressive at serving warrants, because we know we have no place to put them. We've got about 2,400 warrants right now, and that varies, you know, week to week, how many we can find, how many that turn themselves in. So, it's a huge issue. Our community desperately needs the jail that we have. Our community is the real benefactor of this quarter cent sales tax. It's not, if the judge is right, it's a, it's a sales tax for law enforcement, but it's really a sales tax for the community, because every person that we can incarcerate that needs to be incarcerated, the better the community is. We have less people out there causing the problems that they, that they choose to cause. It sunsets this year, the court, I believe, has passed a resolution to put on the ballot sometime in August, another quarter cent for another 10 years, sunset 10 years, I think that's good. Now, this is, of course, this is a, a need that's going to go on forever. I mean, it's just, it just is. I don't see crime getting less, crime is not going down, crime is going up continually. And so, it's a continual need that our whole community is going to have. But having a 10-year sunset at least gives a little bit of accountability there, and so the court, court, and the judge, and myself, we're all being held accountable that we're doing the best we can to utilize this, these tax dollars in a proper way, and that's our commitment, that we're going to continue to do that. One of the things that we negotiated the first time we passed this tax was that if the tax passed, we wouldn't charge other cities in the county to house their prisoners, and the going rate was $35 a head per day. I don't think that was ever put in writing, it was brought up two, three times, and it wasn't in writing, but the county held up their end of the bargain and has not charged $35 a day for inmates since that has happened. And I'm certainly confident that that is something that will continue. And, you know, I think it probably should be in writing, it'll probably be something that maybe our prosecutor and Mr. Youngson can get together and just come up with a simple ordinance to pass by the, that we put it in writing to ensure that that's not going to change. I think that we could go, just like we have the last 10 years, on a handshake, but, you know, the proper thing to do is to have that in writing, and that way, there's no misunderstanding, and it won't be brought up again the next 10 years. So, to end, just to finish up here real quick, and I'll let you guys ask me questions if you want. One question I've had, is there any plans of expanding the jail? And the answer is yes and no. I mean, it's, it's been talked about, just at my office, a little bit with the judge, that at some point, we really need to think about doing that, adding another pod. When we built this jail, we made sure that it was built in a way that we can add another section on pretty easily. It's not going to be real inexpensive, but it will be easily done. We already have a plate out working, so it'll probably add another 30 to 40 beds that we can house prisoners now. They're going to fill up too, but it'll be less opportunity for me to say, sorry, chief, we're out of room, we're out of room again. And so, and I don't like doing that. We hate saying no to anybody who brings, he should bring somebody. Now, if he brings somebody, he's got a felon that he's worried about, we find her, we make room, and I think almost every time we have, when you've called and need some help, and we've had to turn some back, we don't like doing that. So, at some point, we're going to need to add an addition on. We've got a little over 2 million dollars saved up right now that we can maybe utilize for that addition. But it's so vitally important that we get this passed again. Like the judge says, it's a new tax, it's a continuance, it's the same tax that the folks have been paying, and it's a real benefit to the community for them to say yes. It's a vote for their neighborhood to be safer, whether it's a Harrison neighborhood, or there's a neighborhood out in the county, there's a vote saying, yes, I will continue to make sure we have room for our, for our inmates. I'll stop there and try to answer any questions.
Does anybody from the council have any questions for the sheriff or the judge?
I do. The tax itself goes to fund not only the jail, but some of the law enforcement operations as well, right?
Yes, just for jail operations and law enforcement.
Okay. And Judge Hathaway mentioned that there were grants that much sanctuary and volunteer fire department?
Yes.
Do you know the extent of how much that is?
Well, those actually come out of county general, they don't come out of the jail sales tax. I think what he was referring to, if he can correct me if I'm wrong, if this didn't pass, then that's going to mean a lot less money that's going to be available to do those things, because they'd have to use that money to help fund our jail.
Just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, yes, sir.
Why do we have sunset clause, Deanna, when you, this is an ongoing problem?
I think, I think two reasons. I think, one, it just sounds better on the ballot, to be real honest. It gives people, they feel a little bit better about passing the tax and voting yes for a tax when they know that they'll have another option in 10 years to do the same thing. And then, the second thing is, like I said before, just the accountability. You know, if it was an ongoing tax from now until kingdom come, then they'd say, well, there's no accountability, we got to pay that tax for the rest of our lives. If there's a sunset, they can watch, and they can see that we're doing our best to try to take care of the law enforcement needs of this community, and they have that option to vote yes or no. Accountability is good.
How many have you got backed up, rebuilding the day you see?
It can range, in the last year, it's ranged-
How many right now?
Right now? I think about 15. We've had as many as 25.
There's a state still paying for?
Yes, sir. Yes. But they take up bed space, we could be using for city Harrison or for some of our warrants, and that's a problem.
Where do you take them, uh, like I said, if they're full, what does the city Harrison take them?
When-
If we're ever turned down by the county.
We tried Carroll, we've tried Newton County, uh, we tried Marion County, we've tried Baxter, but they're always full too. Uh, and Cersei we tried, pretty much Cersei and Marion is pretty much out, I mean, they're probably closed down the way it looks, so really, our, our backup is Newton and Carroll, but Carroll's now working with Madison County, is their problem, so we're really, really stuck with Newton. Normally, we'd end up doing it and let people go, you know, we just, if they don't hold them, we pretty much let them go. If we do go to Newton County and Carroll, they charge us thirty-five dollars a day.
If everybody recalls, we closed our jail, we only have a holding sale, Rob just warned.
We have a two-hour holding sale in our bookroom.
A lot of misdemeanor warrants or misdemeanor, uh, charges, we never hold anymore. We have very few misdemeanors in our jail. We have to write them a ticket and give them a court order because we don't have room for them. I would say ninety-five percent of our prisoners are felons.
Did you say you have a backlog of twenty-four hundred warrants to be?
Yes, sir.
They live in your neighborhood.
Some of those probably have a lot of age on them. Some of those have a lot of age, we need to, uh, go through them and do a purge, probably just took, probably be, you know, at least half of those are going to be valid that we can execute, uh, execute the warrant, not personally.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Matt Bell with the CDB, would you, uh, briefly?
I can go as long as he did.
You've got six minutes, man.
Uh, I have handed each of you our marketing plan for 2016, not a whole lot of updated news from last year, um, there's some exceptions to that, but I'll breeze through it. Of course, if you have questions after work, feel free to ask me now, or you can come by my office, which is right over there within walking distance. Brief history, we, uh, we were founded in nineteen seventy-seven, the city advertising, tourist promotion commission, um, with the one percent sales tax on prepared food, three percent on lodging. It was one percent on lodging at the time, uh, which several years later was increased to three percent on our lodging properties. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, we had a shift into the social media age in which we started promoting via Facebook, and that has been our biggest win as far as reaching individuals out in the, uh, on a national scale. Real quick, our board is represented by hotel, motel and restaurant owners or managers, and then we have two city council members, Dana, Brian, and then we have an at large, which is Shannon Snow. We actually have Robin Reeves, who's the chairman of our board, uh, our commission here with us today, also behind her, Larry Sexton, our sales director, um, that's two of our team. Go on to page six, key strengths, obviously we have great lodging opportunities here, uh, five hundred and fifty plus rooms that we can use, meeting convention venues, uh, the Quality and Convention Center, JPH Convention Center, and of course, a Duran Conference Center, uh, hosted by North Arkansas College. We have the airport, which has service to Memphis, Tennessee. Of course, you can see I said we had Kansas, but that's not in there anymore, Kansas City. Uh, we're a regional hub for, obviously, everybody in the county that comes in and does their daily, uh, business here, uh, shopping, uh, or, um, you know, utility services and that sort of thing. Um, you know, our proximity to national attractions puts us on, on a lot of travelers' maps, Branson, Missouri, Buffalo National River, um, you know, those are big draws and, and we try to trap them when they're coming to our city, so we're a bit of a hub for that. Uh, and then, of course, our, our long time, uh, big victory has been our sports venues, the Harrison Parks and Recreation Department, does a phenomenal job maintaining against that big soccer complex, as well as Community First Mate Sports Complex and the Brandon Burlesworth Youth Center. So, those three, uh, properties right there are very instrumental in our success of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Some of the key challenges, uh, the Duran Center, you know, while it is our largest, uh, meeting space, it is not anywhere near our largest lodging property, so that's a challenge when we go to book big groups, as Larry can, uh, attest to. Uh, the Quality and Convention Center, um, it's too small, while it is housing a hotel, it does have its limits there. Uh, the Community First Mate Sports Complex, uh, our Parks and Rec Department has gotten creative on turning some fields to accommodate more teams, uh, and do bigger things, but it's still at capacity. In reality, we cannot grow much more than we already have in that aspect. A night, a nightlife for our visitors come to town, you know, we do book events here and then they go spend their, their evening dollars, if you will, up in Branson, Missouri, because they have more entertainment options in the evening hours. Uh, one more last weakness that I will point out is that we are close to Branson. Now, how is that a big weakness? I just said it was a strength because people are coming through here and stopping on their way. Well, uh, because they have all those chain restaurants up there, and, and we see that as a weakness and we acknowledge it. Well, we appreciate the, uh, dining options we have in the city of Harrison, uh, it's hard to get somebody to stop here when they know if they go twenty-five to thirty more minutes north, they can eat at a Red Lobster or Chili's, so. Uh, those are some of the weaknesses. Uh, goals, obviously, our goal number one, it always will be, as long as I'm, uh, the director of the CDB, will be to increase overnight stays at all lodging properties in the city limits of Harrison. And now, number two, local tourism product improvement and development, you always got to be keeping fresh and keeping new to draw more visitors to the city. Uh, moving on to page nine, um, references a little bit, sporting events are going to be a, a target for us continuing, uh, meetings and conventions, um, and then motorcyclists, uh, and then also the leisure and history travel, heritage tourism. Page ten and eleven, it'll go over some of our marketing methods and tools, but to sum it up real quick and easy, it's online, it's digital, it's social media, and that's how we're getting them. Uh, page twelve, measurable objectives, that's why we're going for social media. If you look at our two thousand and fifteen lead results in which we got visitors to Harrison, three thousand five hundred and twenty of those came from Facebook compared to the rest. So, um, the vast majority, as you'll see by the pie chart, it makes it simple to provide a visual, because I'm, I'm a visual learner, uh, the pie chart sums it up. Measurable objectives, uh, you can see there where our lodging and restaurant collections for two thousand and fifteen, while they were up, weren't up as high as we would like to be, and we did not break as many records in two thousand and fifteen as we did in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, two thousand and sixteen budget, as you'll see on page fourteen, this is a snapshot of the budget. Uh, we have increased it from two thousand and fifteen by three point seven five percent, which is still conservative based on two thousand and fifteen collections. Um, our largest expense increase was Facebook and social media advertising, in which we increased the social media budget from, let me look here, uh, twenty-four thousand to this year, thirty-three thousand, an increase of thirty-seven percent. So, with that being said, that sums up my story. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Matt, is there one event or activity that CDB would like to see happen that, you know, we have motorcycle, we have the, uh, motorcycle riders, we have the sports event, is there something that, out there, that you all like have a, a goal to achieve or something you're looking at?
Yes, um, actually, thanks for asking that question. The city of Har- or the Boot County Heritage Museum is working on a project with the Harrison East students and some other community representatives to create what's called a makerspace. Um, a makerspace is hands-on learning on steroids, if, uh, for lack of a better term, it create, it's, uh, for kids to go with their computer, want to do computer programming, metalworking, woodworking, uh, work with textiles, you know, quilt making, all that stuff, it's hands-on. It's similar to what you would see at a science center type thing, um, but that is a big project that, uh, our commission would like to see, uh, it's going to be a lot of money. But, you're looking at addressing the needs that our community has felt for a long time. When it comes to sports, we do a phenomenal job. When it comes to the kids that don't play sports, there's, there's room for improvement. And as you all know, the devil, or the idle kids are the devil's playground, if you want to keep kids off the streets, give them a makerspace. So, there's your project that I would like to see come into.
Anybody else have any questions for Matt?
Thank you. You guys?
All right. Um, there's a couple of things that I want to relay from the mayor. There will be a spring citywide cleanup, and it's going to go by wards this year, just like it always has. Ward one will be Monday, May second through Friday, May the sixth.
Saturday, Wednesday.
Monday, May the second through Friday, May the sixth. Ward two will be Monday, May the ninth through Friday, May the thirteenth. Ward three will be Monday, May the sixteenth through Friday, May the twentieth. And ward four will be May the twenty-third through Friday, May the twenty-seventh. Now, I can get a copy of this to any of the council members that need one.
I saw it.
And James, if you need a copy, let us know and we'll get your copy. Also, for those on the council that are interested, there's a municipal league meeting Thursday, uh, in Little Rock, June the fifteenth through the seventeenth, I think we've gotten emails on that already, so. That's all that I have. Does the council have anything they want to mention or bring up tonight? Does anyone out in the audience have anything they would like to bring up or say to the council? If not, I'd like your motion to adjourn.
No.
Second? All in favor?